Appreciate everybody that's here with us in our temporary chambers and all those out in TV land. I've asked Stacy if she would give us a prayer.
Yes. Our dear Father in Heaven, we're so very grateful for the opportunity that we have to gather this evening and represent Spanish Fork City. We're thankful for the opportunities to serve and we're thankful for the residents who give back and volunteer their time. And we ask that thou would please watch over and bless our community. And we ask that thou would especially bless our first responders, that they will be protected and safe and be with us tonight to make good decisions and be with our residents to be safe as well. And we thank thee for our blessings here and our freedoms and we say this in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. I've asked Councilman Scobes to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Please stand.
Repeat the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any public comments? Come on up, you've got your three minutes of fame.
Just really quick, state your name. My name's Paul Dayton, resident here. Just a quick question about Prop 9. So I understand that's on the ballot with Election Day. I understand that our mayor supports that. I'm curious to see how the rest of the council feels about Prop 9. I'm actually undecided personally, but I'd be interested to see what the council thinks in terms of their interactions with county government, so on and so forth. I've been pleased with how the city's been managed. I don't necessarily feel that way about the way the county has been managed. I don't know if it's a structural issue or anything like that, so I'd like to hear some opinions here to help me sort out how to vote on that issue. Thanks.
Maybe during our council comments, if they choose to express their views, they sure can. Appreciate that. Anyone else that'd like to come up? Seeing none, then let's go to council comments. Councilman Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. Paul, thank you for the question. I'm in favor of Prop 9. I've watched all of the effort that's gone into it. Our very own Councilman Mendenhall sat on the board that originally worked out a lot of the details and presented it up until the day it was supposed to be voted on and was blocked by one of the commissioners. But I definitely am in favor of, I like our relationship with the county that we do a lot with, but there are a lot of things that need some help. And I like the representation from different areas that'll get supported. If it, anyway, for me, I'm a yes on Prop 9. So appreciate you asking that question. Also, Mayor, wanted to highlight the farmer's market. We're down to our last three or four weeks there and want to make sure everybody knows that even though sweet corn and peaches has come off, there's still a lot of wonderful things that you can still come down on Saturdays and get at the farmer's market. And so just appreciate everybody's efforts and all that they put into that. Had a South Utah Valley Solid Waste District meeting where we basically got a facility and site update and we were able to approve our CMGC and financial advisor for the new transfer station. So more progress as we move closer to that project and looking forward to dig in some ground to get that done. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on was just mostly to thank Chief Adams and for making us available, if you will, and some of his staff available. Last week, we were able to attend a scenario training, much like our officers go through, five different scenarios from homeless person in the park and what we would do if we were the police officers. And man, did I find myself in situations where I was not comfortable and constantly questioning. So it was fun to put on the badge for a night and wear the shoes of the wonderful women and men that wear the badge and just grateful for that opportunity to not only rub shoulders with our law enforcement and first responders, but also other mayors and councils from the surrounding cities. And so thank Chief and I know Blake Bradford and all those that put that on. It was a great night to be a part of, so thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Mendenhall.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo, just reminded me when Brandon said that, thanks Chief, thanks all the law enforcement in the area that allowed us to participate. The thing that surprised me is even in a scenario where we know we're not going to really get hurt, we know it's a simulation and everything, the trepidation I had of like when it was time to go hands-on, even with people I knew, you know, and like, I know this guy ain't going to punch me in the face, I know him, you know, but still, just tough, tough job that when you're asked to make split-second decisions and the tough things that our men and women go through as first responders. So yeah, good night to put us in those situations as elected officials. Paul, appreciate the question about Prop 9. Councilman Gordon mentioned it, but last summer, I spent quite a few hours, days, on a committee with other elected officials, both from the state level and the city level and other city administrators. And we studied all the issues of the pros and cons of changing the form of government in the county. Where I landed was similar to what Brandon said. The representation that it feels like in our setting as a council, mayor and council form of government seems to work well. We have an administrator that helps us a lot with the day-to-day activities. The mayor at a county level would be a little bit more involved that way, but where I landed was the administrative and the legislative duties with a three-member commission seemed to melt a lot together right now. And I think we'd get with a part-time council and a full-time mayor, I think we'd get a lot more diverse representation as our county has grown over, you know, especially the last couple of decades. So I think it would, I think it would work well and it would just make that already good relationship that we have with the county, I think it would even strengthen it further from a city's perspective. So I intend to vote for Prop 9 as well. The other things that I've been involved with since our last council meeting, the Rotary Chamber golf tournaments went off without a hitch, I guess you could say. The teams were not as many teams, not as many sponsors, and going through it was actually kind of nice because it didn't take forever either. So I reported that to the Rotary this morning in our board meeting, but still, again, just a huge thanks to the local businesses that are members of the chamber, that come out every year and support that golf tournament, have a good day of fun and fellowship, but also the main cause is the Rotary and the chamber are able to sponsor some scholarships to kids that weren't awarded scholarships. So that's happening to several thousands of dollars' worth of scholarships that'll send our local students off to the next level of education and help them down the road. So good, worthy project and a good turnout for what is COVID year 2020. The Chamber of Commerce was out at our newest member today, out at Gordo's Fun Farm in Lake Shore. Everything was good about that except the name. I'm just kidding, the name's good too. But we had a good time cutting a ribbon out there. Brandon's family's done a good job opening a little business that it seems like everybody's running out to and having a good time with, so that was good. The other notes I took from Heather Yowd, our director, was that our business summit for the chamber is going to be October 28th. That is going to be digital, so it will be a Zoom meeting. So be prepared for more details to come out to the member businesses on that front. The PPE, that's been discussed. Dave could shed more light on that from our Economic Development Department as, if you want to, Dave, I don't know if you're going to do that in another section, but sure the businesses have been grateful for that aspect of it and it seems like some have taken advantage of it. So maybe give Dave a second to brief us on that.
Okay, really appreciate this. We've talked a little bit with the council before about an opportunity that businesses in Spanish Fork have, to receive some supplies, things that would be used to either help make sure that their places of work are safer by way of providing things like cleaning wipes, sanitizing sprays, hand sanitizer and the like, or things that are geared more at keeping people protected from COVID-19, different types of disposable gloves and masks, also touchless forehead thermometers. I think that's basically what we have. The long and short of the situation is that the city is using funds that we've received through a couple of different channels via the CARES Act, the congressional legislation that was passed several months ago now, to provide these materials directly to businesses in Spanish Fork free of charge. There's an order form available on the city's website. You can find it through the Community Development slash Economic Development webpage if anybody has any questions and they just want to simply reach out to us in the Community Development Office, we can help them walk through the details as to how they would place an order. We as the city, we're ordering the materials, they're being delivered to the Chamber of Commerce office downtown where the Chamber of Commerce has partnered with the city to essentially fill the orders. So they're breaking down the big shipments into the individual orders that we've received from the local businesses. I think I mentioned this already, but so far we've had a little over 100 orders placed, about half of those have been filled. And we've asked businesses to place orders maybe on a two-week basis every other week. This is something that we anticipate operating through the end of 2020. And again, we hope that this is something that does a few different things for the community here, first of all. We understand that a lot of businesses in Spanish Fork right now are spending significant sums of money on the materials that are available. So we think assisting from that perspective to provide a little bit of relief from that additional financial burden is a shot in the arm for our local business community. Perhaps just as importantly, having the supplies there, having them used, again, from the perspective that inasmuch as we can help keep those that are in the workforce in Spanish Fork safe, customers safe and so forth, that just gives us the best chance of being able to have commerce continue in an uninterrupted fashion, which ultimately I think is the most important thing, just keeping things up and running, keeping people busy, keeping people doing what they want to do. That's really what this is about. We really appreciate the support that the council's given us on this and the opportunity we have to really just be a conduit to get the support out to the local businesses.
Thanks, Dave. I know I'm the big local government preacher all the time and many of us are, but what a good example of local government trying to step in and help lift where they can to make sure everybody's safe, happy, healthy and staying in business as much as we can. So great program. Thanks for Dave's office in the chamber lifting on that. The business of the month this month is Creative Signs and Graphics, great business here in town, and we will celebrate with them, I think, later this week, so you'll see more about them. Dave mentioned keeping people healthy. My Active and Healthy Minute, I sent Nick a couple of pictures of a gentleman that we'll all recognize that's been to more than a few of our meetings here in council, that my friend Lyle Timmons has been kind of the poster boy, if you will, for the Active and Healthy Movement, showing that even at 87, being able to go down to the Summer Games and do a little basketball, do a little softball, and he always brings home the hardware. And so the reason why I'm bringing him up is his daughter Christine called me last night and let me know Lyle is kind of at the end of his active and healthy life here on earth. And so I was able to go meet with his family for a minute and appreciate working with the city and being able to grab an award that I gave him, was an award we received from the state just last week through the Get Healthy Utah program. And that was given to the city for their efforts in helping promote health and wellness in our community, both mentally and physically. And Lyle was just a great champion of that for us and a good spokesperson, so I thought it would be fitting to just pass that award on to him and his family. Give him a Spanish Fork Dons hat too, Mayor, because he liked to watch the Dons when he could get out and his grandson there from Las Vegas. This picture kind of epitomizes Lyle everywhere. I'd take him, I'd let him know, he'd always have his medals because that's when we'd meet is when he'd get a new medal and kids would be looking at that and I'd introduce him as a gold medal winner to these kids that kind of surround him and ask questions and stuff. So good man, great family, and Lyle Timmons will be missed as a strong advocate for the Active and Healthy Program, the Fit City Program in Spanish Fork, but I let his family know we'll never forget him for his contributions to that. So it's a good man. That's it, Mayor.
Great. Councilman Scobes.
Mayor, one thing to report, the animal shelter, the intake has dropped during this year, mostly due to COVID and the restrictions placed by an average of about 30%. At the same time, the adoptions have gone up since 2018 by about 20%. Just an assumption on my part, but it seems as though people, as they're staying home, are looking for a pet or something to kind of help, you know, help pass that time, enjoy that time while they're stuck at home due to COVID. That's just speculation on my part, but just kind of fun to see those numbers. That's the only thing I have to report. To your question, I also support Prop 19, excuse me, COVID-19, Prop 9. I've got COVID-19 on the brain. Representation is my biggest thing. Recently, Tom Sakovic has kind of, it looks as though he'll be stepping in to replace Nathan Ivey. Before Nathan Ivey, Spanish Fork did not have any direct representation, at least for, you know, for a period of time before that. And so as large as Utah County has grown, having just three commissioners to represent as large of an area, both geographically and financially, to me, it makes sense to have more representation, to have more that, you know, that are there for the checks and balances with the mayor and the council format. And so I'm supportive of having that greater representation. Again, as has already been made mention, that's not a negative on the current commission. We've had a great, great relationship with Utah County, the things that we do here on this very ground with the fairgrounds, the rodeo and other things. But I think moving forward with the growth that's projected, I think having that additional representation will be something that we will need moving forward. That's all I have, Mayor.
Council members back.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. I think that's a great question and I too support Prop 9. I appreciate Mike being on the committee a year ago and there were people all over the county, mayor, council members and just a variety of people from UVU and different entities. And I really respected the time and energy they put into that and I think we all followed that at that time and I like that idea. I think there's too much power with just three individuals. I think that needs to be spread out more. So with, like Care said, with the growth in the next 30 years in Utah Valley, I think we need a much broader perspective there. So, and a couple of things, Wings and Wheels, thank you to the airport for pulling off that amazing activity last Saturday, that was super fun. And a big shout out to the Youth City Council for being down there and helping. They were all over the place, running around, helping navigate that, so thank you to the Youth City Council. And then Facebook Live, I know Scott will be here for our Spanish Fork 101 to talk about the library, but there will be a Facebook Live on Thursday to do a library unveiling and so that will be a fun opportunity for the residents to participate in. And a couple of months ago, Wendy Osborne asked me to be on Tabitha's Way development team as they have had to shift the way their pantry works in South and North County. And so Mayor and a couple of us just received an email, they were going to try and be here tonight to read this and they are not going to be able to come. And so I would just like to take a quick minute and read that. It says, Dear citizens of Spanish Fork, Tabitha's, excuse me, Tabitha's Way Local Food Pantry recognizes that our success can be attributed to the amazing citizens of this great community. With your support, thousands of our neighbors have had their burdens lifted. Now with COVID-19, we are asking once again for your help. We need the help of many healthy and strong volunteers to help us serve the increasing numbers of families needing food assistance. We have created a process to help keep our clients, volunteers and employees safe. We are working to improve our processes. In the meantime, we need volunteers that are able to walk or stand for long periods, lift heavy items frequently and withstand exposure to outside elements of heat and cold weather. If this is you, please join us. We have a simple way to help sign up. First, go to tabithaswaysouth.org, select How to Help and then Donate Time. Thank you for all you do and have done. We love you and are praying for all of Spanish Fork. Warmly, Wendy Osborne, founder and executive director. So they've just had a shift of the way things can work. Patrons cannot go into the building now, they have to just kind of do a drive-through. So the volunteers, they can't have, I think at 60 or 65 and older in their volunteering. So everything has shifted down there and there's already a great need and winter hasn't even hit. So if you're able to donate time or money, hop on their website. Again, it's just tabithaswaysouth.org and there's a couple of opportunities to serve. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmen Argel.
Down the other end. Thanks, Mayor. First of all, Prop 9, I think Utah County, we have grown exponentially. I feel like although the three commissioners have done well serving, I think it's important that more people with this Prop 9, there's been some important decisions and it's been a 3-2 decision. I think it's more important that we have better, not better, but more representation for this large of a county. And I know these three are very busy. Councilman Mendenhall mentioned that with everything that they have to do as far as just with the political stuff and then to deal with the county, I think this is a good thing to have more people represent us in the county and a variety of those people that are representing us too. So I also support Prop 9. I also want to thank Chief Adams and UDOT for putting on that scenario training that they asked us to. I had to ask Brandon after the very first thing I did, I was shaken. I will tell you that my quick draw experience helped a whole bunch. When she came at me with a knife, I did draw my gun, but I didn't fire. So, and she said, I would have stabbed you. But the best thing I liked about this was after, when the officers took just a few minutes after we'd done these scenarios, to see what they face on a daily basis and then listen to some of the statistics that they have and some of the things that they have to go through and when they come upon this scene, of course, what we did was some extremes that they don't see all the time, but it was most informative to listen to their opinions and ideas and things that they had about how they serve our community. And police officers from several of our communities and UDOT was there, yeah, the highway patrolmen. And it's always eye-opening to go to these things and listen. So Chief, thanks for including us on that. I also want to shout out for the Wings, Wings and Wheels. Let's say thanks to our Parks and Rec. Emily, who is our event coordinator, she is so organized. Our city council was there, I laughed, I called her on the phone and says, what can I do to help? And she said, do you wake up early in the morning? And I said, yeah, I'm usually an early riser and she's good, I need you down there, early, around 7:00, because the council, they're not early risers and so I need to be prepared. But the council, the youth council was there. There was only 1,000 that was permitted to come to the Wings and Wheels and it was very hard, as I was there at the gate, to turn away some of our citizens who hadn't really prepared for what was going on and as they come to the gate, they didn't have tickets and it was sold out. It was neat to have, there was a few that came and had bought extras and left them sitting there for Jordan, so we had a few extra tickets, but it was tough to turn away our citizens from something that's very enjoyable and exciting to watch and the things that go on down there. But thank you to Chris Childs and the airport down there and our Parks and Rec for putting that on. It's a great event and it's well-tended. Hopefully we'll be back to something normal next year when we have Wings and Wheels because I think our community absolutely enjoys. I know the other communities come too. Also, I would like to mention, so in a short period of time, citizens of Spanish Fork, you're going to receive your ballot where it is voting time and we're winding down. The United States of America is the greatest nation on this earth and we are governed by a constitution. And I know there's been a lot of commotion, people, politicians, media, we've had protesters and rioters in our streets causing damage and causing fear. And we need politicians and judges who will support and defend the constitution of this great nation. And some of those positions are up and you're going to receive a ballot and I want to encourage you to please, we've talked about Prop 9, which is one of the issues, take time to learn the issues on the ballot and take time to, as you see these people that are running, send them an email, call them on the phone and ask them the hard questions. Do they support and defend our constitution? Do they believe in the rule of law? Do they believe in the sanctity of life? Some of those are so important questions, our freedoms are being challenged. And I think it's important that we get involved in this and that we take a minute to get to know these people. Our judges, every one of our judges will be on this and I know lots of times it's real easy to just click yes, 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 but our judges are important right now and it seems that it's been that our judges are legislating from the bench, something that the constitution doesn't give them the authority or the right to. And we need judges who uphold that constitution. We need politicians who uphold that constitution and the rule of law as they serve. And that goes from the President of the United States down to the mayor and the councils. And that's important that we are involved in that. As Spanish Fork City and those other people that are listening, please take the time to go and take that precious time to vote. It is a sacred privilege that we have, not many countries have that ability, to vote for those people who will represent us in the future. And then pay attention to what they do. Do they stick to their word? I think that's important, that if they give you the word, then they need to stick to that word as they service. I know lots of times other things, tax increases and stuff like that affect whether a politician serves the next time, but I think it's important that at this critical time in this country's history, and that constitution I think is more important now, except for when its birth was in 1776, that those freedoms are being challenged and we need to be aware of that and take time to exercise that privilege we have and vote for good people who will represent us and uphold and defend the constitution that this great nation is built upon, so that our freedoms will stand and will continue as a great nation. And I just ask you to please get out and vote and take the time to do that. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have. to do that. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Your answer. Of course, you already know where I stand. Yes, I definitely support Prop 9. A lot of them, you've heard everything, and I agree with everything that they've said. And the other says, "Well, we don't want to be like Salt Lake County." Well, Utah County is completely different up there. They have a whole lot of different issues and stuff. The thing I like about is, yeah, you'll have a full-time mayor. You'll have part-time council. They'll represent every area in the county. And it also gives them an opportunity to have more representation. Right now, you have two people that control the whole county, you know, because it only takes two votes, two out of three. And so, it's worked really, really well with all the cities, and I think it worked really well with the county, you know, as we do that, and as we transition to that, if that's the way the public wants to go. So, I definitely support it, to see where you're at on that. This week, we also had a challenge thrown down to us by our, as my football coach would say, our Sisters to the North, Springville. Dell, would you like to come and explain what that challenge was and what happened?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, there used to be a gathering of city government people to have a city-to-city, city versus city challenge golf tournament. And they kind of did away with that. And Springville called us and laid down the challenge to a golf match with Spanish Fork. And we were required to bring the mayor and the city manager.
Which was a handicap, right there.
I won't tell you what the handicap was. The mayor, the city manager, the Parks and Recreation Director, and one other city employee. And so, they laid down all the rules. We went and played on their home turf, and we came away the victors, so.
You said our score first, which is a big deal.
Yeah, it is a big deal. We revealed our score first and still won. So, anyway, no, it was a fun outing, but it was good to rub shoulders with those other colleagues of ours in that environment. And so, there you go. We brought home the trophy.
If you're winning golf tournaments, you're playing too much golf. Is there any truth to that?
No, no.
There's no truth, okay.
No, but what were they supposed to, what was the loser supposed to do? I noticed they didn't show up.
Yeah, they actually were supposed to, one of the last rules that they put in the contest was that they were supposed to appear to, the loser was supposed to appear to the winner's city council meeting and bring peach milkshakes from Taco Amigo.
Chief, I want you to look into that.
Could you send a cop car over there right now?
Anyway, they didn't show.
There you go. Thanks, Dell.
You're welcome.
That was a lot of fun. And, you know, they pulled, I've just got to teach Seth that you don't ask them what their score is every time we see them, you know, because I said, "It's always, we're one under whatever their score is."
Well, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, I know, you don't. So, anyway, that was good. Wings and Wheels, as has been mentioned, was an awesome experience. As you know, my wife, she's a Hoosier, an Indiana gal, and she loved the drag races, and she got a thrill out of that. It was unreal. And you had exotic car race down there. You had cars that were worth a million dollars racing in that, on their tarmac there. So, great event. People are coming. I'll be glad that we can have more people there next year. And kudos to those who put that on. The training we had with the Highway Patrol, Blake Bradford, what an experience. That really helps you understand what's going on, what the police officers go through. One of the scenarios was a domestic abuse one. I knocked on the door. The guy came screaming, went back to his wife, picked up a knife, you know. I shot. And then afterwards, we talk about it, and they said, "Okay, this is good. This is what it'll be." And the newspaper, it says, "Police officer go into a man's home, shoots him in the back." But they'll leave out that he was stabbing his wife. And so, these are the things that you go through, you don't realize. And it's a split-second decision. So, hats off to what you guys do, because you go from high intensity, then you're here trying to talk a person down. So, it's, I have a whole new appreciation of our police officers after going through that training. So, that was good for the council and the other four cities that were involved in that. So, thanks, Chief, and thanks, Blake Bradford, for that. The other thing I wanted to mention, we've got something here. I just wanted to let Mike know how much we appreciated his service as the president of the League of Cities. We've got a little something here for him that we put together for him. Mike was a fantastic president on top of everything else he does in the city, as a chamber president, as on the city council, all the other committees he's on. Once again, he'll go down in history and the League of Cities as the only president that had two conferences canceled under him, you know. And I'm not going to say it was because of COVID, but he did a great job. It was interesting, we were cleaning out my mother's house, and my wife found a program, I guess, from 1976 for the League of Cities. So, I brought it and showed it to Mike, and it had all the list of past presidents up till 1976. We had one Spanish Fork president, and that was Tim Moran, if everybody remembers Tim. My dad was the city judge, and so he would always go to these conferences. And we'd get to come up on the weekend. And as kids, I can remember, it was a great time. So, Mike, we just want to let you know how much we appreciate all you do, everything you do, and what a great leader you are, and have been, and continue will be. So, thank you. Okay, I've got a special request by Chief Adams, that he'd like to take a couple of minutes. And I never turn down the chief, because he might have something on me.
Each of you bringing up the training that you went to, I just wanted to talk a little bit about that first, and then share something with you that's coming up. But we are very appreciative of Trooper Bradford and what he put together. I know that he talked to Stacy a little bit prior to putting things together, and then along the way. He got with all the different chiefs in the area, talked to the leadership in each of our cities, and was able to get a lot of our support from the other departments. But you know who showed the most support out of the council members there? Spanish Fork. We had the most council members there during the training. And then, when the question was asked, "Have you ever been through training like this?", who's the only ones that raised their hand? Spanish Fork. You guys are so supportive of us as a public safety department. And it doesn't go unnoticed. We truly do appreciate that. One thing that, you know, the citizens watching this or listening to this, or the people you've even spoken to, they might say, "I wish I could do that." And for about two or three months now, I've given the assignment to Sergeant Cade Harding and Phil Nelson to put together a Citizens Academy. They, this last week, presented to me their outline of the training that will be given. It'll be about, it'll be longer than your one night. It'll be eight weeks. And each week, it'll be about two or three hours a night, going through the same, similar things that you have gone through, but in a little bit more detail, a little bit longer, and a little bit more participation. But in the coming months, I'll have them here, and they'll do a 101 with you and the city and citizens, and tell people how to apply to go to that Citizens Academy. We're hoping that we can give them the same feel that you have, and have a better understanding of the day and life of a police officer.
Thanks, Chief. That'd be awesome. Okay, let's move down to Spanish Fork 101. Library Design Reveal. Scotty?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and residents watching tonight. I'm Scott Aylitt, the Director of the Spanish Fork Public Library. And tonight, I'm excited to be here tonight to talk a little bit about where we are in the design and pre-construction process for our new library, and give you a little bit of a tease of what the library's going to look like. This Thursday, on Facebook Live at 11:00 a.m., we are going to do a more broad reveal. We'll have a 3D rendering and 3D model that we'll go through and show both the interior and exterior of the library design, and answer residents' questions. But certainly want to give a plug out for that tonight, and give you a little bit of a tease of what the actual library will look like as we begin construction on it next year. So, as kind of a recap of where we are, certainly the process to design and build a library, or a building for that matter, takes a lot of time. And it's not something that goes by quickly. And this is something that has been talked of, previous mayors and councils, and kind of the boots-on-the-ground work on this library really started last September as we started the program process, where we identified what are the different building blocks that we need within the library. What are the spaces we need? What are the various needs that we have as an organization at the library, as well as kind of those physical needs? And so, you can kind of imagine it being like Legos, right? We build these different blocks of spaces that we need. So, that process started last September, went on for several months. And towards the end of that process, we had some public input opportunities for our residents, and we had a great turnout, and received great feedback from our residents on some of the needs that they see within the library. So, moving on to the next step, within the schematic design process, we take kind of those Lego blocks, and we start to put them in, in an order, and figure out, okay, let's put this here, this here, and see what, you know, the footprint and the design schematically of the library would look like. Again, during that process, we had two more opportunities for residents to provide feedback on what their library would look like. First, in March of this year, we had a community satisfaction survey that talked a lot about different areas within the city, but we asked specific questions regarding the library and got great feedback there. And then, the following month, we had a more specific one, looking at exterior materials for the library, brick, stone, metal, et cetera. And again, got great feedback from our residents. So, moving forward, we took all of that feedback, and going through that schematic design, and over the last few months, we've been really refining it. We've got the building blocks in place, and now we're kind of making those final touches before we start finalizing the building plan, sending it out to bid over the next several months, with an anticipated construction start date being next spring. So, we are so excited as staff at the library as we meet and see our patrons every day. It's probably daily that I hear staff explaining to residents, "Yeah, the library's going across the street. This is what we anticipate. These are the spaces." And it's fun to see the excitement on our residents and patrons' faces as they see this library finally taking shape. Before we get to what I think a lot of you are wanting to see tonight, being the design, again, I'd like to really thank our residents and our staff and our mayor and council for their involvement throughout this process, and particularly the residents. We know that oftentimes, residents may feel that they provide feedback on something, but they don't necessarily know or see how that feedback is then implemented. And being involved in this process from day one, I can attest, and I think everyone on the committee can certify, that residents' feedback has played a direct role and impact on what the library looks like, in terms of placement and elements and amenities that are included, as well as how it looks on the outside, as well as the inside. So, thank you, residents. You may feel like your feedback doesn't really matter, or it doesn't go anywhere, but I know it does. And I hope you see that as you see how the library will look once it's completed. So, in terms of the site, a common question that we get asked is, "Where's the new library going?" And so, the new library will go in place of the old Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints Chapel that's on Main Street, just south of the Thurber School City Office Building. You'll see probably in the next month or so, maybe two months, that building come down, and site preparation will begin for the library construction to begin next spring. But that's where the new library will go, is on that west side of Main Street, on that corner of First South and Main. There are some benefits to us going on this particular site. First and foremost is the fact that we can piggyback off of the existing city parking lot. We will increase the existing parking within that block by about 46 parking stalls, which that's a big issue over at the city, or, excuse me, with the existing libraries, just insufficient parking. Another amenity that residents really talked a lot about was the ability to have a drive-up book drop. And we are so excited, you know, that was a priority for us through the design process, is making sure that we had that book drop, and make sure that it's right. And so, we're excited that we've made that possible, and excited for our residents to have that amenity in the new library. So, on this, you'll see, oh, here's my cursor. So, this block right here is the Thurber School. This is kind of the site plan for the block. Here's the revised parking lot on the block. And then, this down here would be the new library building. So, again, tune in Thursday at 11:00. You'll be able to see a 3D design of the library and see both the inside and outside. Tonight, we'll give you just a sneak peek from the southeast corner. So, this would be First South and Main, looking to the west of what the library will look like. And I'll talk a little bit about some of these exterior elements and how the public input influenced that. So, again, here's First South and Main Street, so to the right is Main Street. Through the public input process, a lot of the exterior materials that our residents liked were brick and stone and wood, not so much metal or terracotta or some of those other materials. And a key component, as we looked at the exterior, was how do we respect the historical nature and prominence of Thurber on that same block? And so, we spent a lot of time looking at different brick types and colors and stone to help complement the look and feel of Thurber in this new, more modern building. And so, the majority of the building is still built out of brick, or has a brick facade in a color that's maybe not the exact same color as Thurber, but it's complementary, but with some stone, some dark stone to help kind of complement that brickwork as well. Another element that we heard a lot about from our residents through the design process was a desire for natural light. And so, how do we balance the natural, you know, the old feel of Thurber with the brick, but also meet the needs and the desire for more natural light coming through? So, there's a lot of windows facing east on the building that you can see here, that will provide a lot of natural light and help make the library feel really open to our patrons and to our residents. So, we are so excited, and I know that our residents and our patrons are very excited for this new building. So, certainly join us this Thursday at 11:00 a.m. on Facebook Live. Myself and our PIO, Nick Porter, will be live answering your questions and giving you kind of a 3D walkthrough of the library, and answering any questions that you might have. So, again, thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time, for your support. Thank you, residents, for your support of the library, even despite COVID times. Even just in September, we circulated over 90% of what we did last year, though we were only open about 80% at the time. So, library's still pertinent and important for our residents, and it shows. So, thank you again for your support, Mayor and Council, and residents, and have a great evening.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate that. Okay, let's move down to consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Public hearing. Now, let's go to transportation master plan.
Okay, we're a member of a, it's called an MPO. It's the Mountainlands Association of Governments. of Governments, and what they do is they do the planning for all of Utah County on their transportation, and they update their transportation model every 10 years, and they updated their model out to 2050. And so we did a transportation master plan for our city that adopted that model and updated our plans for that. Some of the key parts of that plan is we updated our trails plan, creating a lot more connectivity on the city trails. One of the aspects of all our collector and arterial roads is we show on one side of every collector and arterial road, a trail, and so we integrated all of those into our trails master plan. Another thing is, a lot of research has gone into how intersections operate, and one of the things that we've really found in study after study is how much safer continuous-flow intersections like roundabouts are. And the reason being is they only have conflict with traffic coming from one direction, and that traffic is coming at an average of around 17 miles an hour or less. And because of that, you have a lot milder accidents, very few, if any, injury accidents, and that creates a much safer environment for the residents. We've been really focused as a traffic committee with the police and the fire and engineering and streets have met over and over again on how can we make the roads safer and have them flow better? And these continuous-flow intersections, we feel like can be a key part of all of that. And so integrated into the master plan quite often is a roundabout before a signal. And sometimes when you get to study an intersection more closely, you'll find out maybe a roundabout can't work. It's very easy to take an intersection where you planned on doing a roundabout, put a signal in, but it's very difficult to take an intersection where you plan to do a signal and put a roundabout. So you'll see a lot of roundabouts in the new transportation master plan. The other thing that we did, and I don't know if you can bring this up, there should be a link in there, but we created what's called a story map. And this is the same thing that Mountainlands Association of Governments did with their master plan. The feeling was, we really need to bring our traffic and our transportation plans to the public in a way that they can understand them and they can get a good feel for what is being planned. And so you'll see up here is a story map where the really key parts of the master plan are just at your fingertips, and you can go to maps, you can zoom in, and you can kind of see what's planned for your area and really kind of see what is coming. And also, you can easily access a lot of the studies that our traffic engineering office has been doing. We do a lot of studies, and it's very important to us that that work to do, the studies, is not lost and is preserved for future. Sometimes we'll study an intersection or roadway, and the improvements that that study shows are needed can't be budgeted for years and years in the future. And so we want to make sure that all of that study information was preserved and easily accessible from the master plan. And I think, I mean, there's lots of changes in there, but I think I hit the highlights of that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Might after the public hearing. Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now in public hearing. Anyone that'd like to come and discuss this, you're free to come up. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilmember, Councilmember. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other questions or comments on this?
Yes, Chris, I have some questions. On some of the figures, I just have, I know a number of the roads and different things they talk about, level of service, those are on either state, well, state roads, basically, but some of them, I don't see a match on the plan with what I drive every day. So for example, Main Street and Center Street, that intersection, as you're coming west on Center to turn south on Main, it talks a lot about 35 seconds per car. Sometimes that left arrow doesn't turn on for two cycles, three cycles, and so cars are there backing up for more than 35 seconds. Canyon, Canyon Road and Main is even worse than that, right there, the new 7-Eleven, far longer than 35 seconds per car and two and three light iterations before I can get through. And again, I'm just going off of, you know, experience that I've seen. Some of the roads that have been talked about recently are green, whereas residents in the area say that it's always backed up, it should be a yellow and things. And then transit facilities was another one, and those are, again, part of the state's master plan, but the transit facilities even into 2050 shows kind of going through, you know, down Canyon Road, but nothing that enters to the south. And so if you live south of Canyon Road, even with the two new developments that we approved across the street from the park, our last meeting, add those in, and anything further south, you've got a mile walk just to get up to Canyon Road if you live anywhere in that whole neighborhood. So I guess my question is, granted they're state roads, granted those intersections I view as a yellow or possibly even a red, and there was only one that was, well, it was four intersections, but it was one section that currently was red on current level of service. What can we affect by adopting this? Are we telling the state, yes, we agree with your findings? Or what can we change and affect on some of those? Because it, and it may be an agree to disagree, but I disagree with some of the state's findings on those particular issues, and there are others, but those are some I just wanted to highlight.
Okay, so our master plan shows Main Street failing. It also shows well into the future that it fails, and the only relief for that is the Center Street interchange. We pushed really hard for that Center Street interchange and actually got it on the 10-year plan two years ago, and we're continuing to push really hard for UDOT to prioritize that intersection higher. We've asked for them to give us the analysis on why it's ranked, I think it was 83rd or 84th, and they showed us a little glimpse of it, and we've asked to, as they reevaluate that, to be involved in that a little bit. And so that is a big issue, is our Main Street. One of the things that we do not want on Main Street is for it, the solution to be widen it out to seven or eight or nine lanes like you see on Orem's State Street. And so we would hate to have that be the solution. So we are very concerned that we don't create a plan that says we need seven lanes down Main Street so that we can get traffic through and then have that put off what we think is very important, a Center Street interchange with I-15 where the commuter rail station will go. So, yeah, it is kind of a difficult balance to master plan around state roads where we don't have as much control, and I agree with you on that. One thing that you'll see is failure in the north-south direction, but not in the east-west directions. Those failures are because of Main Street, not because of the east-west roads. And so, but I would like to talk specifically about the Canyon Road intersection. We have been asking for a dual left on there for a long time, very similar to what happened on 10th North. On 10th North, we went to UDOT several times saying we need a dual left there, coming from Macy's area down onto Main Street. UDOT, over and over again, kept doing their studies, saying that it wasn't needed, it wouldn't work as well. We finally paid for another study showing that it would work well, gave it to UDOT. UDOT said, okay, we'll do it, and it worked a lot better. One of the things that we found when we did our study of 10th North and Main Street was UDOT was discounting the fact that a lot of people were driving through 10th North, going into the ShopCo parking lot area, doing a U-turn, coming in, then turning right. And they're discounting those as through traffic, which was really messing up their study, and we're able to point that out in our study. And we're doing a similar thing, we're having the exact same problem on Third South, and we were in a meeting with the school district a few weeks back, and they commented that there is a lot of traffic coming down Canyon Road, and I don't want to give anyone ideas, but it was going straight through and then through their parking lot and then coming out, head south. And so we've since contacted UDOT, asking them to take that into account and pass that on. My gut feeling is, we might have to do the same thing we did on 10th North and pay for an expensive study and get it through that way, but, boy, I've seen traffic back up both northward and eastward on there quite a bit, and we've asked them to study and re-study, and I don't know what more we could do, honestly.
We're doing a lot, and it's just, it's methodical, not taking the foot off the gas pedal, if you will, because it is, it is not.
Let me say one thing about some of these troublesome issues as they get brought up to us, either by you and these kinds of settings or in other forums from you or residents, the relationship that our Public Works and Development staff have created with UDOT goes so far, so far, because they, when we push back on something, Chris is outlining here, we've pushed back hard, they don't dig in their heels and say no. They do have their processes that need to be followed, but they do, they walk through them with us, and it takes a little bit of time, but other cities might experience a wall, and we just have a little speed bump and get over it and move forward, so. Couple of driving alliterations there for you.
One of the things we're really focused on is safety, though, and we've been monitoring with the help of the Police Department, the safety and how safe our streets are and our intersections. And one of the things that we've noticed is, I think, seven of the top 10, or eight of the top 10, I think what it is, is seven of the top 10 most dangerous intersections are on Main Street, and the other two are on Highway 6. So nine of the top 10 most dangerous intersections are all UDOT intersections, and we brought this up with UDOT last time we met with them and said, hey, we need to make things safer here in Spanish Fork, and hopefully, over time, building relationships and working through the issues in a diplomatic way is going to pay off like it did on 10th North for us.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Two quick points, Mayor. When I started looking over this traffic study, embarrassed the mayor a little bit, but last week, with the chamber reaching out, they asked the mayor to talk a little bit, and an email that I received after the mayor spoke, I won't say his name because I didn't ask if I could read his email, but this is just on a high level of what we're dealing with and maybe the long-term view that you're talking about, about how some things get painful, and then we try to come up with these fixes. This just says it well, and I know we could all read emails like this, but this guy says, "I'm the Associate Vice President of University Relations at Utah Valley University," so he works at UVU. "Thanks for speaking to the chamber, I enjoyed listening to your insights about leadership. I'm going to share your great wisdom with my family about smooth seas, never make a good sailor," that was a good one, Mayor, "and if you're not at the table, your lunch. While I live in a town that neighbors Spanish Fork, I'm in Spanish Fork nearly every day. I've admired your vision, leadership, and work to help the city and our region. If there's anything I or UVU can do to be of assistance to you, please don't hesitate to call or email me." So maybe UVU can give us some money to fix these things, because here's a professor that's nearly in our town every day, but we get emails like that all the time of people that, in neighboring towns, that are in Spanish Fork nearly every day, and they might not work here, but they're in here one way or the other. And the same thing this morning at a ULCT board meeting, which was fantastic to be the has-been president of, it felt really good. But Councilman Gordon's friend, Mayor Niehaus from Moab, when you're talking about CARES Act funding and everything that they're needing down in Moab, she brought up specifically Spanish Fork as a gateway to her gateway community. And, man, if you're not seeing that on Highway 6, on the east side of town, in Spanish Fork, we are the gateway for everything happening down that way, and it's tough, it's not easy. I mean, there's times where we hop on Highway 6 to get on the freeway from my house, and it's like, holy cow, I'm not going too fast, it's going to take a minute to get on the freeway. But that stuff is tough decisions that come for, it takes a long time to figure out. So just from the high level, those two things stuck out in my mind that are recent about what we're doing and about what we have ahead of us. But the result is, we have some solutions on the horizon that we're trying to get done as quick as possible, and it's a good problem to have, that we do have people coming to our community, going through our community to other places of the state. So I like the economic development factor of it. So thanks, Chris, for all you do in working with that.
Chris, would it help if we gave them Mike's chocolates?
Yeah.
If it would, we could arrange that.
You gave the MAG chairman the chocolates, it would work out really good.
Okay.
He has a big influence on a lot of these projects. And that's what I'm saying, Chris has done a great job. We have, I sit on that MAG board, and we talk about all these projects and all these roads, and, you know, it used to be, we didn't get hardly anything, and now we're getting a lot. And so they're listening to us, and it's Chris, kudos to Chris because he's developed a relationship with those guys, and, you know, we are starting to get a lot of these projects that normally would have got pushed back down the road, we're getting those, and so it helps.
I have to say, Jared Johnson does an incredible job on that committee getting money, so he's really the main guy on that.
Good deal. All right, any other comments or questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve transportation master plan.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Sewer master plan.
This isn't a comprehensive change to the master plan, it's just, one, to a map that kind of lays out where facilities will go. The two primary areas of change are in the southwest quadrant of the city and in the north quadrant of the city. One of the things that we were able to do is to lay out a west interchanges trunk line that would actually abandon a lift station, the Spanish Trails lift station, and then also, we're able to fine-tune a little bit better where the sewer mains and lift stations would go in the southwest area. This is a normal evolution of a master plan. As an area becomes more ready to develop, we start taking a little closer look and maybe fly from 500 feet instead of 5,000 feet, and we start locating more specifically where facilities will go and how they'll operate. And we have the same situation at the north end of the city where a regional lift station would And we have the same situation at the north end of the city where a regional lift station will make it so that we can abandon three other smaller, more local lift stations. And those master plan changes are being shown in there. Anyway, just more of a smaller change to the overall master plan.
Great. Okay, this, too, is a public hearing, so I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing. Got a motion by Councilman Nargal, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye. All right, anyone from the public that would like to come up and address this issue, you're welcome. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing. Got a motion by Councilman Nargal, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye. Any questions or comments concerning this?
My move, we approve the revision to Figure 15 in the wastewater master plan.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Beck. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, let's go to Ordinance 17-20, approving amendments to the construction standards.
Actually, I need to take my glasses off to see close, so that's kind of weird with that operation. This, we have a whole slew of changes to our construction standards in here, and so I just want to kind of hit the highlights. My goal is actually to bring the construction standards and these master plans to you more regularly with smaller changes that we can really focus on and talk about rather than having it be so comprehensive. But some of the larger changes that we have in here is some guidance on looping drinking water lines and pressurized irrigation lines. We basically want to do what makes sense. And so, we're kind of leaving it to the discretion of the city engineer, but also saying, you know, these are kind of the limits for fire flow, protection, and pressures. These are kind of the limits for redundancy, for how we, we don't want too many homes on a dead-end line so that if there's a break, we can't feed them from another direction. And so, we set some guidelines on that. Second major change is that we added another masonry wall standard with colorings that we felt tied in well with our city. And then, we developed some standards for evaluating pipe. Video inspection is a lot more common now, we're required of developers. We have a video truck in-house, and we do a lot of it. And part of it is, we took all of our operators and we trained them in what's called the NASCO rating system. And so, now we're requiring developers, contractors, when they do the video inspection, they also follow the NASCO guidelines. We reduced the cost of the deposit for an excavation permit from $2,000 to $1,000. We updated the pavement design standards. Pavement is something I think that often gets neglected in cities, where it is probably your most valuable asset you have as a city. If you add up the value of all your roads and your curb and gutter and all of that it would entail to replace those, it's a really valuable asset. And so, it's something we pay a lot of attention to. We actually hired an expert firm on just pavement design and the mixed designs and the standards for laying and inspecting it and all of that. And they went through with a fine tooth comb all of our pavement standards, made a lot of recommendations, and those changes are in the standards. And then, we updated the sprinkler system standards as we get more and more landscape done around the city. And then, quite a few, just minor changes to our construction drawings are at the end.
All right, this also is a public hearing, so I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing. Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye. We're in public hearing now. Anyone from the public would like to come and discuss this issue, you're welcome. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye. Any questions on this?
Chris, is a lot of these moves in, say, the manholes, I'm looking at the standard drawing of sewer manhole or drop manholes, is this just technology that's making a lot of this better? Like this, a watertight plug at the end of a service on each home? Is that all it is that you're seeing, or is it just new technology?
Some of it is. A lot of it, too, is the Water Division is getting a lot more involved in this process. I feel like our Engineering Division's done a good job of inviting them to the table and really talk about how these things are getting constructed. When we design a new water project, you'll notice our Water Department's out there quite a bit monitoring, making sure it's being built how they want it to be built so that when they maintain it. And they are, I have a system now where I won't review any of these plans until they have reviewed them. And so, it has to go through the Water Division, it has to go through Engineering, and then it will come to me. And if they haven't reviewed it, I won't review it. And so, them taking a harder look at the plans and how things are built has really made some improvements, I feel like. And a lot of it is, new technologies come out, there's a new sewer pipe out there that is really, really good, and you don't have a lot of the corrosion and smell problems that maybe we have throughout the city where you have some of the old concrete, the old-time solutions that we've had. And so, these are updates, too, that we can learn about in conferences and manuals.
My second question is, it's been over a decade since I was in the asphalt industry, but there was a lot of changes in the asphalt sections. And the question I get asked a lot, and I know the answer to, but I'd like you to answer it, is, do we follow the same standards when we are paving our roads as a city as if we bring in a private contractor to do the work?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one question about the fee, the cash performance deposit, lowering it from $2,000 to $1,000. What's the thought there? Are we, to be more competitive? Or is that on a scale of job? I mean, I'm thinking if we have somebody do a $50,000 job that involves excavation, a thousand bucks, performance bond isn't a lot if they're going over timeframe, or am I misconstruing what that is?
Yeah, a lot of those bigger jobs, we actually handle on a bonding-type situation. These are usually smaller excavation permits, a lateral here or there. But one of the things that we were finding is, a lot of this cost was being passed on to the owner, even though the contractor is going to get this money back because of how long the contractor was sitting on it. And we just evaluated and just felt like it was more fair, a thousand dollars holding that. And just more out of concern for the residents, having some of that deposit cost passed on to them as a real cost. And so, that was kind of a concern. So, we just wanted this, if anything, to be a little bit low, I guess.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Ordinance 17-20, approving amendments to the construction standards.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Nargal. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Nargal. Councilmember Beck. Councilman Gordon. Councilman Mendenhall. Councilman Scobes. That passes. Okay.
I move we go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation and land transaction.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon. Second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye. Thank you, appreciate everyone being here and watching.